All right, good evening, everyone. The City Council has just returned to open session after convening to discuss an appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals authorized by State Government Article 3-305B1. We are out of the closed session. And that's it, correct? Oh, I need...
You're down, Sabrina.
In our closed session, thank you. I'm going to need a little help getting on track this evening. In our closed session, we did discuss the appointment of Nick Rice to be our city administrator. So I'm sure there'll be a nice press release coming from the mayor's office to discuss his appointment and his talents, and we're welcoming him back. And, well, he had worked for the county earlier, but we'll welcome him back to the county, and he's going to be working for the city, and we're glad to have them. Okay. All right. All right, so we're moving on. Do I have to say the time? Oh, my goodness. All right, 6:34 PM. It is September 8th. This is the legislative session acting. The vice president this evening is going to try to coordinate the meeting the best I can. Let's see. Good evening and welcome to the September 8th legislation session of Salisbury City Council. In the event of emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors that you came in. Make a right and proceed to the stairwell in the hallway. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left around the corner and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask everyone to please silence your cellphones. And, let's see, Ms. Jackson, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Appreciate that. And now we're going to have the city invocation, Pastor Greg Morris from the Parkway Church of God.
Thank you again for the opportunity to represent the people of faith in this prayer of invocation. Coming from Psalm 33, we have an inspired prayer. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today to serve our community, we acknowledge that the earth is full of your unfailing love and that by the word of the Lord, the heavens were made. We come before you seeking your wisdom, knowing that the Lord foils the plans of nations, but that the plans of the Lord stand firm forever. Guide our deliberations and help us to craft policies that reflect your righteousness and your judgment. Grant us hearts that understand that true strength comes not from human power or might alone, but you, oh Lord, give us our strength. Help us to remember that the eyes of the Lord are those, are on those who fear Him, on those who hope in your unfailing love. As we make decisions that affect the lives of our citizens, may we be instruments of your love and of your care. Help us to protect the vulnerable. Help us to provide for those who are in need. Help us to create an environment where everyone in our city can flourish. We pray for unity in our discussions, wisdom in our choices, and humility in our leadership. And may our words be truthful and our actions just, reflecting the character of the one who loves righteousness and justice. Bless our city. Bless our residents and all who call this place their home, and may we be good stewards of our community, entrusting to our care. We offer this prayer trusting in your goodness and in your guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
After that closed session, we needed that one. That was good.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Morris. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, presentation and adoption of the agenda. So, Ms. English, would you like to review the agenda for us, please?
Good evening, council. On the agenda that I have not had a chance to look at myself, we have a few meeting minutes to be approved on the consent agenda, three of them to be exact. Two resolutions, Resolution 3422 and Resolution Number 3423. We will not be doing the budget amendments that are listed on the agenda today since we do not have four-fifths of the council present, so those will need to be rescheduled. We do have...
Just for the record, we can't read the ones for second reading, but it is fine to read the one for first reading.
So that would be ordinance number 2954 will be the one that we will have under ordinances this evening. And then the one for North Prong Park, ordinance number 2955, we will also be able to do. And that will conclude the legislative session.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the legislative agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's going to be one of those nights.
It is.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the vice president says aye. All right, our consent agenda, I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. English?
For the consent agenda this evening, we are looking for approval for April 22nd, 2025 Budget Work Session Minutes, April 23rd, 2025 Budget Work Session Minutes, and then April 28th, 2025 Work Session Minutes.
Any questions, ladies? Any questions? All right, I don't have any either. All in favor?
Aye.
And VP votes aye. All right, our resolutions. Do I need a second and a motion for those two? I don't see it here, but I think we might...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was wondering, okay. Can I have a motion in a second to read Resolution Number 3422, the reappointment of reappointment of Margaret Lawson to the Historic District Commission for the term ending July 2028?
So moved.
Second.
And then go ahead and do Resolution 3423.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to read...
Approve.
To approve the Resolution 3422?
So moved.
23.
3. It's 23.
I have 2... Oh, sorry, I do. Resolution 3423, appointing the Cohen Law Group and its partner CBG Communications, Inc. to provide cable franchise renewal consultant services on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, perfect. Ms. English?
It'll be ordinance time for Ashley.
And is that the one we're doing? Or not doing? That's the second reading?
There'll be... First reading will be for... 2954 will be the first one that she's...
Because these other two we cannot do.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So we're going to the first reading for ordinance number 2954, first reading to accept grant funds from the Office of Problem Solving Courts discretionary grant adult drug court program to provide overtime reimbursement to police officers conducting curfew and contract compliance checks on clients in the city of Salisbury. I need a motion in a second?
So moved.
To approve the ordinance?
So you stole my thunder. Ordinance number 2954 is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Office of Problem Solving Courts discretionary grant adult drug court program to provide overtime reimbursement to police officers conducting curfew and contract compliance checks on clients in the city of Salisbury before you, tonight, for first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
VP votes aye. All right, and...
2955 will be the next one.
So, Madam President, you can just call for first reading of ordinance number 2955, and I will read that for you after there's been a motion in a second.
For ordinance number 255, first reading...
2955.
2955, reading authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for land acquisition for the North Prong Project using reallocated proceeds for the public improvement bonds of 2024. I need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Beauchamp?
Sure. Again, for you tonight for first reading is ordinance number 2955, which is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for land acquisition for the North Prong Park Project using reallocated proceeds of the public improvement bonds of 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? VP votes aye.
Madam Vice President, may I...
Yes.
... something?
Yes.
May we acknowledge Margaret Lawson, who is here?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes. Maggie? Go ahead. Go ahead, Madam Vice President.
For the resolution...
Reappointing.
Yeah, reappointing.
Margaret Lawson.
Margaret Lawson.
Historic Commission, yes.
We want to thank you for your service.
Yes.
For your re-service. For your double-duty service.
Extended service.
Ongoing.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And was there another resolution, I think, for... No, that was it. Nope. That was it. Okay. All right, and we're going to move to public comments. And Councilwoman DeShiel has the clock this evening. We are all doing new things. We're all growing tonight.
This could be dangerous.
Okay, any public comments? I think the public comments are on the agenda items, or is it... It's also open to anything, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, agenda items and open to anything. Anybody for a public comments? You have three minutes, please come say your name at the podium. Good evening, Mr. Langford.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you, I'm Michael Langford, 1026 Arthur Court, city of Salisbury. I wanted to speak on an issue not on the agenda about keeping intact our nonpartisan elections in this city, and how I just think that that's something that really makes this a great place to live. I have a saying that I like, civics over politics, where we can have civic engagement rather than political partisanship in order to get things done by working on projects versus worrying about whose party or tribe we're a member of. And so, nonpartisan elections have a lot of different benefits. They reduce polarization that partisan politics bring in. It leads voters to focus on their candidates, merits over party affiliation, leading to a result where people are overall more satisfied. Greater inclusivity to voices, people who are outside of traditional political parties like the Republican or Democrat, the largest majority in our country, then get more of a say. It is a more inclusive paradigm to keep it nonpartisan. It does lead to more competitive competition within the local arena, but that leads to more responsive governance, because the only people who are going to get the people's votes are those who can both speak for the people and also listen to the people, right? And bring that as a communicator. So, you know, I just really... There is something... There are things that people worry about with nonpartisan elections, like there being a vote-splitting aspect. And sometimes you end up with leadership or a representative that maybe has not felt to be representative of what, you know, like a true candidate. And so there are alternative models that I would suggest that instead of going in a direction, if anyone were to, towards partisan elections, I would offer instead that we look at ranked choice voting. It's a simple model in which that leads to... It keeps us from going to that partisan model, and it allows there to be an outcome that does, is truly more representative sometimes than just a majority wins-all model, which is, you know, what it generally tends to be. So, that was all I wanted to share as far as this segment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Anybody else? Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, I am Mr. Taylor, Salisbury resident. A couple of things, I want to endorse what he just said about the elections. I think it's a good idea to keep the system we have. That's not what I came here to speak about. A couple of things. Been a lot in the news in the last week or 10 days about the MOU that the county sheriff has made with ICE, and I'm not for or against that, and I'm not speaking one way or the other. But I do have a question of what happens to persons who are arrested by the Salisbury Police Department and then wind up in the county jail. Will they then automatically be subject to that MOU? And I'm only talking about, of course, aliens who have a warrant out from the feds. I'm not talking about just Joe Blow. And it's just a question. I don't know. And I don't have a position on it one way or the other, but I think we ought to know about that, because it will be... They will be at the county jail, not at the city police department. So that's a question. The other thing is, there's going to be discussion tonight about council appointments. And I've looked into... I wasn't here when you passed the new ordinance on the Planning Commission, but I've looked at it, and the legislation says that all of the members of the Planning Commission, all seven, must be appointed by the mayor, then, of course, confirmed by the council. So there is no ability for the council to appoint anybody to it, either a member of the council or anyone else. And incidentally, that's the same as in the state legislation, so we're not any different from the state legislation, which obviously controls. It's a higher, superior legislative body. So I just want to point that out for your discussion tonight, that everyone on the seven, no matter who they are, where they come from, have got to be appointed by the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Oh. Mr. Fenosa?
Said it right, thank you. If only my students could do so well. Speaking of which, real quick, shout out a happy 100th anniversary to Salisbury University.
Yay.
So, yeah, here we are. So, my apologies beforehand, because I promised my nine-year-old I'd take him out on the bicycle again, so I'm going to leave early tonight. But I did want to say this, it's unfortunate that Councilmember Gregory is not here, but it needs to be said, and so I'm going to say it, so, thank you. Recently...
Mr. Fenosa, I will give you your time back, but one thing...
Sure.
And I realize I'm just stepping in tonight, but what I do know is, I believe the rules of order, you don't call out a particular name. Now, you can discuss an event or a situation, but I don't think you say somebody's name.
He's public, he's public, he can say anything, he's not subject to rules of law.
Okay, that...
That is how it works. Thank you.
Mr. Langford, you...
Can I defer to the attorney on that one?
That was a line.
Are you speaking about an event?
I'm speaking about the conduct of a city council member that happened in public.
Sure, I think that's appropriate for public comment.
Correct. Okay, so, it is. Thank you. So recently, city council member Michelle Gregory took issue with the coverage of our PAC-14 show Open Agenda, where we questioned the seriousness and the viability of her candidacy in the upcoming county executive race. Let's be clear, criticism and active discourse are essential for maintaining a free society and to protect our increasingly vulnerable First Amendment and civil liberties. Also last week, during a series of public Facebook posts that she engaged in with dozens of other people, she and another person posted images of cartoon figures holding guns while referring to our group at Open Agenda. No less than six different individuals screenshot those posts and sent them to our group email. To be clear, we do not think that Councilmember Gregory made any active threats against us, but it does reflect poorly on her and on the city of Salisbury, especially given recent events that have occurred, such as the recent incident at Parkside High School where an 18-year-old brought a loaded handgun to school. Elected officials have a responsibility to set the tone and example for all of us, even if they get offended by the sometimes brutal critiques of members of the public, which I admit we often do, as is our right. And those elected officials certainly cannot automatically claim victimhood on every issue when they act in such a manner. Related to that, I also want to take exception to the fact that Councilmember Gregory has also referred to both my and Open Agenda's comments toward her candidacy as being based on, and I'm quoting here, harassment, misogyny, and even stalking. I want to be clear, and I'm thankful there are lawyers in the room, these are serious allegations that should not be used lightly, especially in print. At no point have I or any member of Open Agenda ever engaged in any behavior that could be legally construed as either stalking or harassment. All criticism that we have made toward Councilmember Gregory and other elected officials has been based on their voting record, public actions, and positions on issues. Let me also say this. As a man who was raised in a house of working-class women in New York City, and as someone who's been married to a woman for 18 years, who survived brutal and unspeakable physical abuses as a female political prisoner in Eritrea, one of the most repressive countries in East Africa, I find Councilwoman Gregory's comments, her flippant accusations, truly disgusting. I also want to say that I have publicly, as a resident, have been fortunate to have been represented by fantastic female public servants, including, of course, County Council Member Shaney Shields and City Council Members Jackson and DeShiel. So please, for Councilmember Gregory, it's a shame she's not here, because I would have said to her directly, "Do your job, get off social media, maybe come to meetings, and stop dishonoring the selected position." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close out, adjourn for our work session, but go right into our work session. I want to call the order at, let's see, is it 6:55? Our work session, we have a presentation for our summer youth program recap, Rachel Manning, our community relations manager.
Vice President Blake, may I just make a recommendation that the item at the end of the agenda, that council discussion on the boards and commissions representatives be postponed or tabled for later one?
Yeah, I was going to mention that in the end because of the...
Correct.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, but I was definitely going to mention that as we got down to that on the agenda. This is the very last item. Okay, Rachel.
I have a presentation to put up on the screen.
Oh.
Chris.
Yeah. Hello.
It should be the only one.
We're excited to see this. I hope everyone else is. Ms. Jackson, are you excited to see this?
Yes, I am.
I know you would be.
Yes, I truly am.
While we're waiting, I want to give a plug to Rachel, because she is starting her neighborhood walks yet again.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Oh, you're dragging...
You're dragging my name.
That's fine, totally fine. Okay. Well, thank you for having me. I've just got a brief presentation with some pictures, going to do mainly talking and explaining and telling you all about what we've done this summer. We're starting, way back in May, we did our first-ever youth business fair hosted at the Newton Community Center. This is something that I hope to continue and do every single year and really grow to be much larger, and hopefully outgrow the Newton Community Center as a venue. But we hosted 12 young entrepreneurs that sold all of their handmade goods to the community, and it was absolutely wonderful. That's a picture of some jewelry and candles, believe it or not.
That's awesome.
The kids did everything all themselves. They came up with a price list, and some of them had really fancy displays, and it was pretty awesome. So that was back in May, and again, I hope to do it again next year. Now to get into our full summer programs, at the Newton Community Center, we held our summer drop-in, and as you can see there, we had a total of 650 visits from July 1st to August 22nd. Here in the pictures, you can see the kids are doing some cooking activities. That is like the most favorite thing across the board that they do. So, those were two separate days that they were doing some cooking things, I believe, or maybe not, maybe that was the same day, but anyway. But they cook all kinds of things. They'll go to the Camden Community Garden, and they will pick some vegetables and then come back and make a salad, or cook them up on the stove. So, here is a picture of one of the girls with her cucumber that she picked from the garden.
Who loves.
This year, we were really lucky. Martin Hutchinson, that runs the garden, gave us two beds to take care of. Last year, we had just one. This year, we had two that were just ours. He put signs up so that no other community members would tend to them and leave it just up to the kids. So, they were able to take care of that all summer and go and pick all of their vegetables. The other picture is of Jordan, she was our summer youth employment student, playing games and doing different activities with one of our students. But as you can see here, all of the activities that they do include gardening, arts and crafts, games, video and music production, so we do keep them busy, we do get them outside. It's super hot, so, over the summer, so a lot of times the outside activities are limited, but we have enough inside to keep them busy all summer. Free lunch was provided by Wycomco County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services, and then the final three weeks was provided by the city of Salisbury. So everybody was fed lunch throughout the entire summer. This was the one of our field... Well, the only field trip that we did this summer. Again, that is something that we want to do more of in the future. Transportation was our issue. We were going to use the trolley, but then it was out of service. So, just in the future, we have to figure out the transportation piece, and we'd love to take them to different places, but it was really awesome that we were able to take a group of kids to the zoo. And they got to play at Ben's Red Swings as well. So, it was really awesome. We had a great time. Here's the newest program, which was Game On at Lake Street Playground, yes, that Councilwoman Jackson helped us with, and thank you so much, really, April, because she really was there almost every single day throughout the entire summer. And so it was really awesome to have that support, and it was extremely successful. We really had an amazing turnout, and I was super happy with how it went, because we were all nervous with the first year of something, you never know how it's going to go, but it was really, really great. So, as you can see there, we held the program from July 1st to August 22nd. We had anywhere from 10 to 25 youth visit every day, and some... I would even guess that some days it was more than that, because we had groups from Salvation Army Summer Camp that would come. They would bring like two vans worth of kids every day. So, some days it could have even gone over 25. Also, free lunch was provided by Wycomco County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services, and then the last three weeks from the city of Salisbury, and that was done actually in partnership with Dover Street Grill. So we want to thank them too, because they stepped up last minute and provided meals for us every day for three weeks, and it was really awesome. They did a great job.
Wow.
Packed them up for us in to-go containers every day, and it was wonderful.
It's nice.
So, some of the things that you see here are the activities that they did. To my surprise, the kids enjoyed doing the arts and crafts more than the sports activities and being out and running, and so these are some of the art projects that they worked on. And then we have some more, which I just thought was like so awesome. If you see those canvases that they painted, it was just, I couldn't believe that they all did that themselves.
That's lovely. Very nice.
And so like the top right, you can see some of the kids are working on art projects, but then if you look in the background, I know it's kind of small and hard to see, but the playground was full of kids that day, and I just thought that was so cool, and that was the whole point, is to have the playground being utilized and to get the kids out there and being active and utilizing the park. So, it was definitely achieved, and it was pretty great. And then Councilwoman Jackson is down there in the bottom picture playing games with the kids.
I think he cheated.
I was just going to say, they probably cheated, so there is no winner.
That's not...
No, but that's the truth, that's what happens.
I let him cheat.
Here's one more picture that really showed just how many kids that we had sitting under the pavilion that day doing the painting project. So, again, it was just so awesome to see so many kids out there having a good time. And then we did do a water slide twice. Well, we did a slide, dry slide, the first day, and then we ended with a water slide, and the kids absolutely loved that, so they got to have some fun climbing and going down the slide. Then on to our summer youth employment program. So, again, this is a long-running program that the city has done, and this year was probably one of the best years that we've had, at least since I've been here. We hired 11 high school students that worked part-time from June 23rd to August 15th. They worked in field operations, arts, business, and culture, HCDD, the zoo... HCDD, the zoo, and the police department. So thank you to all of the supervisors, department directors. They all really, really supported our students and did a fantastic job. So on the left, you have Dylan. He worked in field operations specifically with parks. And then on the right, you have Nathan, who worked in streets. And they did an absolutely fantastic job. Like I said, probably one of the best summers that we've had. So again, we continue to grow this program and continue doing this every year because it's such a great opportunity for the students. On the left there, we have Jared Jones. He worked with ABCD, and he was just, he loved it. He was picking up trash that day in Unity Square and just had a great time. He helped with Third Fridays. He helped setting up for events, changing out the flags on the plaza and things like that. And then we had Nat that worked at the zoo. And he did a really great job in engaging with the kids as they walked in, doing the stamps on their hands. So they did a wonderful job. And that's it. So again, we have one more event coming up this Friday at Salisbury City Park called Park Fest. That's right. That is something that I do in partnership with a lot of the elementary schools and maybe some of the middle schools. But we do that just about every year as well, where we just go out, have a great time at the park. Everything's free. We serve hot dogs and have games, inflatable games, things like that. And everybody just comes out and has a good time. DJ and dancing and things like that.
Where in the park and what time?
By the bandstand from 5:00 to 7:00 this upcoming Friday. So that'll be our end-of-summer event.
Council questions or comments? I have a comment or a question, both, actually. Would the city be able to summarize this and get it out on the city webpage or Facebook page with all the, just like highlighting all the summer activities? Because those are fantastic numbers. And also, I think it shows that the city is really committed to engage youth.
Absolutely.
And I think it's been outstanding, outstanding.
And I have more pictures too, if you need them.
Yes, thank you. I've got some videos, but I didn't. They did karaoke days. Like, there was one day that was kind of rainy. We didn't cancel because it wasn't that bad. So they stayed under the pavilion and did karaoke. And I have videos of them doing karaoke, and it was just awesome. I didn't think that they would want that on public display. But it is really great. They had a really good time. So yes, we'd be happy to put more.
I would like to see that on our Facebook page, a summary of that. That is really good. That's really...
Yeah, and actually, Jordan did come out. Jordan and Adine did come out and get some video those last couple days. So we do, we have that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, Charter Amendment Resolution. To amend SC 5-1 of the Charter to increase the maximum fine for misdemeanors and municipal infractions from $1,000 to $5,000 in accordance with newly updated state law. We have Mr. Bo, oh, hello, Mr. Bo. Housing and Community Development, Mr. Mir Boda.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Evening.
No timer.
No timer? Okay. That's too much pressure. All right, so the first, so we have two items tonight. So the first one is this Charter Amendment. Now, you all may have seen Mr. Taylor's email, which offered another option as well, which had Laura Ryan and I had discussed that. So that's an option as well. And there's probably several other places in the code we could do the same thing, where you don't just always update stuff every time something updates. But this piece is a step one of kind of like what we're working on. The, you know, one of the things where in the code, we would specifically, this is like an example that I put in here, where the county has their littering fine is $1,500. Ours is $1,000. We would really like to, we'll propose legislation eventually to change that to $1,500, to be in line with the county. And so that's something, just you would see maybe a couple of changes like that in the future. The other piece that we're doing is we will be, and I've been going through the code, I'm about halfway through, and we're looking at every infraction, every fine, every, whether it's a misdemeanor, whether it's municipal infraction, what the fine is, whether there's a sentence. So we're going to be going through, putting all of that, organizing all of that, and then eventually, what we'll do, a similar thing that we do with our fees, where annually, we will do a, basically, a fine schedule. And then just do it at budget time. And if there's any changes that need to be made, we just do that at budget time. So simultaneously, we're going through the code where these places are, and we would change those sections in the code under different things and just refer to the fee or the fine schedule. So then that way, it's, we don't have to keep going back into a specific section of the code and updating something if we wanted to change a fine or something in the future. So again, this is just a step one. If you all would like us to, which maybe at another work session, present the other option on the Charter Amendment, where it's just referring to state code and not necessarily restricting us to the amounts, we can bring that option too. And when the full council is here, then everybody can debate which one they would like to go with, if that would be okay to do that in the future.
I'd like to see the other option, only because which would be more concise and be easier to understand.
If I may, I think it's easier to reference the state law. I mean, in this respect, it doesn't change that often. But if we're doing it, we might as well reference state law. So it would be a more workable solution. Additionally, there will be another Charter Amendment that's going to be coming before you. And I think it would make sense for both Charter Amendments to track the same at the time in terms of publications and all of that. So our office will go ahead and revise this Charter Amendment Resolution.
Ms. English, can you put that on the next work session so we can have that ready to go? That sounds like a good idea. Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Okay. Ordinance amending Title 15 of the Salisbury City Code and Title Building and Construction to add the adoption and reference to the International Property Maintenance Code, Housing and Community Development. Mr. Boda.
All right, so this is International Property Maintenance Code. It's the ICC or International Code Council. They have a long list of a variety of standards, whether it's International Residential Code or National Building Code. There's a whole list of them. And I think earlier this year, we updated a code to bring the ones up to 2021. This one, International Property Maintenance Code, was not included in that. And this is something that actually our housing inspectors, our code enforcement officers, this is a part of the test that they take. So they're actually certified in this, but our code does not reference this. We have some items in our code that use elements from the International Property Maintenance Code, but we don't reference that code as a whole or that. And it's a book, it's about that thick. And it's, so it's just better for us to bring this in because this is part of the standard that we train to. But it's also good, when it's not necessarily in our code, we can refer to this like we do with some of the other things in the other codes, International Residential Code, for example. And we would just refer to that. So that's what this is. It's adding that to that section for referral.
It becomes "I" under the list of other codes.
Yeah.
Any other council questions? Do we have a consensus to move forward? VP says consensus. We're moving that forward. Thank you very much. That was easy peasy tonight. Thank you, Mr. Boda. We appreciate it. Okay, we are going to table, actually, I think what I'd like to suggest is put it on the next work session. Is go ahead and discuss the representatives for the boards and commission. We'll do that at the next work session when all of the council members are going to be fortunate enough to be together. Okay? That's what we'll do. Okay, public comments? Apparently, the agenda items only. You have three minutes. Mr. Langford?
Michael Langford, 1026 Arthur Court, Salisbury, Maryland. In this case, I want to talk about the code and how we enforce it. So there's two problems. Code enforcement currently is on a complaint basis only. If there's something broken in this city, why can we not fix it? And why are people paying taxes if they can't go around and leave their offices? It's just, it's fine that we do it this way now, but we can change it and make it serve people better. And I will say that the city is very responsive in general to those complaints and will address them. I'm pleased with that. But the idea that they just are complaint-driven when we know we have rundown parts of town that need fixing, it just doesn't seem like it serves the public's interest. I don't know really what the rationale for that motivation to make it complaint-driven is. The other aspect is something that I happen in my line of work. So for those who don't know, I'm a property manager for my vocation. So I had an, I had to go to court, as you do sometimes. And what I was shocked to find out was that I tried, I had a tenant who had a complaint. The complaint was found to be unfounded. But regardless, this tenant had a complaint about their rental unit, and they called the city, and they would not send rental inspectors, rental unit inspectors, to address my tenant's complaint. I called the city for, on myself, to have them inspect my own rental unit. They refused to do it at my request. It had to be court-ordered. Absolutely absurd. These people, I don't know what we're paying them for. But like, when the code enforcement is complaint-driven and the rental inspectors don't inspect rental units, how is the public served by that? We need to make those changes to how we operate in the city so that people can get what they need and that the city is more responsive, that the government is more responsive to the public's complaints, issues, requests. You know, they're reasonable. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Taylor?
Keep it brief. I told my wife I'd be back by 7:30. I think it does, I think it does make sense to just do the simple version of the charter change that you all discussed. There are many things in the state code that essentially govern. I think I said in my email to you, you probably didn't even need to put something in because the state law is just automatic. It operates. It says you can do these fines and imprisonments. But since there's already something in the code that now conflicts with the state law, you've got to change it. So anyway, I think you've come out with the right answer on that. As far as the, getting back to the planning commission, I want to make the suggestion that there should be, in my view, nobody from the city council on the planning commission. I think that that automatically introduces bias into that group. It should be a body of city residents and some others because they can be from outside the city to some extent, who are interested in the matter, that do not have close ties to the construction industry. And that's the way it should be. Now, that doesn't mean that the mayor can't nominate somebody from the council and that you can't confirm him. That law allows for that. But I think that the better way to do it is to not have somebody on there. Just my experience has been that in some of the larger jurisdictions across the bay, they do not do that. And in some jurisdictions, they actually have a separate attorney for their planning commission that is not part of the jurisdiction's solicitor. I'm not recommending that we do that. I'm just mentioning that that is done in a lot of areas. So my suggestion would be to not have anybody from the council on it. I think if there would be somebody from the council, it's time for a change. I think it ought to be Ms. Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The planning commission board was not on the agenda. However, and I don't think anyone from the council was even proposed, proposed or was willing to sit on the planning commission. Now, wait a minute, Ms. Jackson, wait.
No, he's on the county.
The new one, no.
He's on the existing one, yeah.
But yeah, but not going forward, correct. Wait a minute, wait a minute, Ms. Jackson, did you want to put your resume up? Mr. Taylor suggested maybe you put your resume up?
I'm nominating you right now.
My resume speaks for itself.
Hey, who? Again, now I agree.
Very active in my community, very active in the city of Salisbury.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaks for itself.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Just seniority on here.
Okay. We have three minutes? Oh, wait.
She's got to get it.
Sorry.
Hi, Mike Pransky, 106 Monument Square. I just, I know the agenda item I showed up to speak on is being postponed, but I'm going to take the opportunity anyways. When you all do have your discussion about councilmember participation in boards, commissions, and committees, I think it'll be really important for you guys to, I don't know how to, the best way to do it, but I'm going to just put it out there, is that there needs to be an accountability mechanism for council representatives. We often struggle in terms of recruiting folks to serve on boards and commissions. And I think one of the things that will draw people to serve is that they have regular interaction with decision-makers. So one of the challenges our committee, on the Parks Committee, sees is that the departments that are active in parks-related activities are many. And we only interface with one person in one department, and oftentimes, that person is extremely far removed from any of the decisions that are made. And oftentimes, they show up to find things where a decision's been made that affects their work or that affects, you know, the condition of a facility, and it's just a brand-new discovery to them. So, you know, I think I've shared with councilmembers, with previous mayors, an executive order that a previous mayor passed specifically related to the Parks Committee when it was established, and it involves people from lots of different agencies. And it kind of laid out an expectation for them to participate. So I think when you guys have this discussion, maybe it's amongst each other, maybe it's, you know, I'm not here to police councilmembers and what they do. But I think in terms of setting a standard for each other is, you know, reporting back at least once a month from the committee that you serve on, or maybe you serve on multiple. And I think that's perfectly fair, is to at least give an update once a month, something that you found, something that you'd like to address. Bring it to the public forum so that people know that you're actually, you know, trying to address issues. So our next meeting is at the Boundless Playground this coming Thursday at 6:00 p.m. And there's going to be a number of issues that we're going to raise during that meeting that have been raised for the past two years in terms of actual maintenance of the facility that we need to address. And we can't wait for the piecemeal approach from Project Open Space because oftentimes, that funds playground equipment. It doesn't always fund other things at the park that need to be addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we go to administration? Administrative comments? Administrative comments?
I just want to say thank you to Rachel Manning for all of her hard work in the summer. It's impressive to see. And honestly, it's tough to get out and see all the amazing stuff she's doing because it seems like it's one thing after the next. So, and she did take the reins on that summer youth employment program. We actually ended up hiring the young gentleman from ABCD. So he's going to be with the events team.
Wow, congratulations. That is nice. Nice to know.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I want to address a couple of things. One, I want to thank the council for moving the city administrator job with Nick Rice forward. We're desperately in need of his talents and skills, and we're looking forward to working with him. Second, on Mr. Langford's comment, you know, just today, we were in our meeting, we were looking at something at the marina. There's some overgrown grass and the fence that shouldn't be, and we shouldn't. And I was like, well, if we know about this, why aren't we fixing it? Why aren't we, why isn't it on the list for tomorrow morning? So, you know, as a 30-plus-year resident of the city and is now as mayor, you know, one of the things that I wanted to, have always wanted to do and continue to try to do is be as proactive a mayor as I can in terms of the administration response to issues.[1765.66]
in terms of the administration response to issues. And so, to give you a couple of vehicles, to communicate, call the mayor's office, 548-3100, option eight, that's us. You can tell the mayor or the Citizen Reporter, and we're listening to all those channels. And as a matter of fact, you know, Tom Stevens, who left a little early tonight, his role is going to be evolving into be kind of like what we're calling special forces for that very thing. Because what ends up happening is the stuff drain on Fitzwater Street gets set in the free ops. Well, they've got, they're juggling 100 things. So, he'll have a little smaller focus and customer-facing stuff that you're seeing every day. And that's how, kind of how I feel like the model should be, because it just sometimes gets in the wheel and gets churned up. That said, you know, we want to be as responsive as we can. Second, the last thing I want to mention is Folk Festival's coming up. Looking forward to seeing everybody out there and having some fun, listen to some good music. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We're going to shift to council comments. Councilwoman DeShiel?
Okay. I had the pleasure of attending Wycomico County School, their opening day session, and they had a phenomenal speaker, Jeremy, who got the whole crowd pumped up. It was at the Civic Center, and I think it got the teachers off to a really, really good start. Quite a few of us were there. We tried to represent all of you very well. Habitat Blessing was really interesting. There were supposed to be two houses, which was, I think what makes it special to council members that attend, is if you go to the groundbreaking and then you see the house come to fruition, and you're just in awe of what has taken place. There was one Home Blessing, but then they had a tour of 21 homes in the Church Street area that they have, that Habitat has, you know, been involved with and has found homes for families. I didn't realize there were that many in such a congested area. And it was, it was really a worthwhile event. The SU Gala was Saturday night.
Yes.
And it was the roaring twenties. And so, they had a lot, they had a big turnout for that. So, they're celebrating 100 years. That was their basic kickoff. Unfortunately, the additional kickoff for Sunday afternoon with a Ferris wheel and food trucks and everything like that. It was pouring with rain. The other thing, which I think, and I hate saying "uh," sorry, airport meeting today. They have the Breeze, which is the new cheaper flight to Orlando. And we did have a laugh, because if you want the $59 ticket, that is the flat rate. If you take a piece of luggage on, there's a little extra, little extra. So, they're not doing anything differently from what the big airlines are doing. And their, October 1st is their inaugural flight. So, everyone's excited about that. And the other nice thing, as you well know, the Aviation Maintenance School opened on the 25th of August, and they have 15 students that are enrolled. And in addition to that, there are about 30 students that are in the pilot training, flight training out there. A lot of things going on around here, so.
Thank you so much, yes. A lot of things.
I want to answer Mr. Taylor's question about immigration. There is an immigration department in the Wycomico County Detention Center. So, I'm kind of figuring if the immigration has picked up, or ICE picks anybody up, that's where they would take them to and tell whatever they decide to do from there. I'd also like to send my condolences out to the young man, DeQuan, who was found, he was missing and was found in the Wycomico River Monday. I know the family very well. Their hearts are broken, and as they should be. I know, I've been asked this question before, why don't we have rails on the, I can't even think, on the riverwalk? And I was told once before, it was because the state owns the waterways, but I think for safety purposes, we have to do something. And I know, I don't know what happened, how it happened, but I'm going to tell you, I went to the, I fed some of them Friday. And when I looked down at the bridge, it broke my heart. It really broke my heart, to see all those people under the bridge. I was like, oh, my God. And the sad thing about it was, I only had enough for five meals, and I went beside the library, and it was just exactly five people there. And I was like, oh, God, thank you, you know, for just having that. Because I would have felt slight if I couldn't gave everybody one. But it's a sad time, and we need to concentrate on how are we going to do this with the waterways, because we found numerous people in the Wycomico River. So, it's becoming a problem. And I know, first thing would be say, well, they shouldn't be under the bridge. Well, where do you go when you have nowhere else to go? You know, where you have nowhere else to go. So, I'm just looking at that. That should be a conversation for the city. And thanks Housing and Community for supporting the playground this year. It kind, I ain't going to say it kind, it brought me back to memories of when I was a little girl. The only thing about it this summer, it was so hot. I was like, I can't go out here every day like this. It's too hot for me. It would just drain me. But it was such a pleasure being out there with those young kids. And I'm going to tell you something. I didn't see not one, you know how people say children are bad? Not, wasn't, not one of them. Out of order, not one. And Asia, who was the director, did an awesome, awesome job. And I wish she could have been here tonight, because she worked with those kids by herself, except for when I was there, and another young lady that came almost every day. But she did an exceptionally well job. And she's an IA at, I want to say, North Salisbury Beaver Run?
Beaver Run.
Beaver Run. So, I know she'll be excellent there with the kids, because she never got out of sorts. She was just cool, calm, and collected. She, I never saw her get antsy about anything, and she did everything she could to accommodate those children. And these are the kind of people that we need. And this is the kind of measure that we should take to secure our children during the summer when their parents cannot afford childcare. We need to make sure our kids are in a safe haven, and they were this summer. And I thank you, and I would love to see this move on to Doverdale for next summer. And because those are the parks that are at risk. They're called at-risk parks. And that's where the need is. Most of the other parks are just parks that people may be frequent every now and then, but these are the parks in the neighborhood that need the most attention. And I just thank you. I thank you, Mayor, and I wish Rachel had stayed, because I really thank y'all for doing this in the city, for backing the program, because it's needed. It's, I don't care what people say. We have money for everything. Let's make sure we have money for our young people, to make sure they don't get in trouble. We have parents out there also, who stay with their kids and monitored their kids. And they were just fabulous, and they worked with us, whatever we had to do, they were working, whether the snowball machine, whether it was painting, playing games, or whatever, they monitored, and they stayed there. So, like I said, these are things that we need. These are things that we should continue to do. And I'm really happy with the support that we receive from the city and Housing and Community. Also, I'm working on my trunk and treat again this year. I haven't got it off and running, and I don't have a flyer yet. I'm just behind the eight ball. But I will be coming my next meeting with a flyer, and so we can push that forward for, I know it'll be October 31st. And I know it will be at the Village at Mitchell Pond, but it's open to everyone. It's just not for that development. It's for every person in the city and Wycomico County, and it's open.
Relay for Life.
Relay for Life, oh, yes. I was a, I always say a poster child, but I was a portrait of, on the Portrait of Hope's, and I nominated you, Ms. Lynn, for next year. And it is September the 19th, from 5:00 to 10:00, and I know that's the Folk Festival time. I have a team, and I started off, I said, I'll raise $1,000, you know, because this is my first time ever doing this. So, I did. I raised over $1,000. And if anybody else wants, and Mike has helped me, Sharon has helped me. If anybody could go on my Facebook page, please go on my Facebook page, and you can donate, I don't care what it is, $5, $2, $3, it all adds up. I'm not asking people for large amounts of money. I'm just asking you to help. It's not to help me, it's to help somebody else. I had cancer. I'm a two-time survivor of cancer. Ms. Bratton is a three-time survivor of cancer. So, we just want to make sure that people survive, or people get to maintain their medical and whatever, whatever. So, I just want you to support that as well. I don't think I have anything else to say. No, I don't. I'm just thankful for what.
Crab raffle?
No. Oh, I do. I have a crab raffle. And, oh, my God. I'm always, I do, I'm always doing something. I have a crab raffle. I don't have the tickets with me right now, but it's $5 a ticket. But you get, the first pick is a bushel of crabs and 24 ears of corn. The second one is a half a bushel and 16 ears of corn. And the next one is a dozen with six ears of corn. And the tickets are only $5. $5 per ticket. It gives you a good chance. And I know the first time I did it, it went, it was phenomenal. So, if you're a person who loves crabs, just come on and just support this. It's for my, my nonprofit organization, which is Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activities. This is, this money goes to all the free events that I give, not only for the youth, but I give for the seniors as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson and DeShiel. Thank you very much. By the time it gets to me, you've covered a lot. The Home Blessings, we were there. We were there on a couple of things. Certainly, the gala's been on the top of my mind. What a beautiful evening that was. And I had with me my grandmother's yearbook. She graduated in 1929, 96 years ago, from the Salisbury Normal School. And so, she graduated in May of '29. Of course, October, the market crashes. But her and my grandfather ran away to Philadelphia. And he was an electrician, and she worked as a social worker and teacher in the inner city of Philadelphia. Later, she goes to the University of Penn State, and she gets her social work degree. And she becomes a social worker. She comes back to retire in Kent County, in the Chestertown area. And she actually starts and opens up what is equated here as Dove Point. It is, it was called Angels Haven. It's the Kent Center. And she founded that and opened that and operated that, starting, actually, in the mid-'60s. So, that was wonderful. And, but that yearbook is very fascinating, and I didn't know how much that meant to me until, until recently, too. So, that's kind of nice. But we do a lot of things, and I'm glad you guys reported on all that. And I'm thinking that on October the 1st, we all, I think the council needs to take the first trip down to Orlando.
There you go.
And back. That would be awesome for $55. Okay? And with that, this meeting is adjourned.